All right, thank you. Next, we have the approval of the amendments of February 22nd, 2022 meeting.
The chairman has approved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Black and white, chairman.
We have a motion by Commissioner John Garner, a second by Commissioner Jerry Emerson. Any discussion about amendments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next on, we have budget amendments. First, starting with the particular county schools. We have Superintendent George Wilson.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
Got several budget amendments. If anybody has a question, would be glad to respond. If you say it, we'll answer. One of the commissioners contacted me today, just mentioned under regular instruction program, that's under, on the first page, under regular instruction program, the one called the maintenance of the plant, is mentioned from line item 46511, in both of those, additional revenue. Just for your information, every January, school districts receive an additional revenue source that is for health insurance for our employees. So that's where those are coming from, is from a state fund, which we're does, and in this case, this is for grid, putting those monies in this budget. I make the motion for it.
Black and white. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Tim Grohl, a second by Commissioner Jerry Emerson. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next on budget amendments, we have the highway department.
Mayor's committee, fifth time we have them here.
Next, on the budget amendments, we have the trustees.
Good evening. I'm going to be pursuing, trying to answer any questions on the mayor's. I'm trying to answer any questions as far as the budget amendments, but can the mayor's office plan the trustees, all the other departments to sit here? Does anybody have any questions?
I got one. Wait. Second page, third page, under other, other charges, 40,000 and 10,000. What a world of other, other. What a core. We just got these tonight.
Right, right. Judy just got them printed out, and just got them printed, so we can get them. The 40,000 is something on the, if I'm not mistaken, the Department of Investments Office. We are doing something different now, and the county retains property. We have to pay the Department of Investments Office. Our sheriff, we have a better view on that, instead of recouping them as a tax service. So that's something we've been doing for several years now, but we just have to, we don't know how much to push it forward, so we have to make the move.
Is the sheriff here? No. We just made a decision here today. We got 40,000 from this company, 10,000, this holiday, I guess, for guards. What's happening, more guards or?
Judy, the big debt.
Yes, 10,000, 10,000 under J. Guards, overtime, and the cost for that. If we increase the number of guards, it's all coming from 10,000.
No, sir, we have not increased the number of guards.
There's other questions on this? Since we just got this tonight, if we postpone these to the next meeting, maybe we can get some answers.
Yes, sir. Judy has something else to answer, when she went some days, and she asked me, are we just, if we are out, Commissioner Marty, to postpone this to the next meeting on the budget amendments, over the county. For the trustees, and the solid waste in the library.
Savannah here, so please, Savannah, look, here's the library.
Oh, I'm sorry. Savannah called, she had some problems with her blood pressure, and she is in an emergency room, and Jackson's in a shock. She said, she started, if there's any questions, maybe they about her before, she would answer them tomorrow, if she needs to do their own herself. Y'all received your library, before it is repacked. Is there any questions on the library before all the amendments? If not, we can have a motion, and a second on the library. I make the motion for it. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Russell Clayton.
I'm on second.
And a second by Commissioner Pam Moore. Any discussion about the library? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's all.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, this is not picking that motion. Are they asking us to appoint someone to their board?
Yes, that is what we was going to like, since Mrs. Savannah is not here, we was going to like, to our next commission, we need to do that. They have to do it before his term runs out, and that is in June, so we can't do it at our next commission. Next, do we have any amendments to the fire department? We have any amendments to the maintenance department? If not, we proceed on. The TBA options, y'all received a letter that I received from Southwest Electric. I'll read the letter to you. It says, "Thank you for participating in the Southwest Electric Membership Corporation and TBA in the Generation Partners Program. Your Generation Partners became effective July 27, 2012, for a period of 10 years, and will terminate on July 27, 2022. Therefore, Southwest Tennessee Electric Membership Corporation and TBA will be discontinuing payments for your power production effective 7/27/2022." This being the solar panels that are behind the criminal justice center, we was on the TBA program. I continued on with the letter, it says, "TBA offers other programs in which you may be eligible to participate. You can review these programs offerings on their website. If you'd like to pursue any of these offerings, please let us know, and we can discuss your eligibility, or any questions you have." And he gives his number, and I did call him, and he sent the letter out, but he said, "At this time, there is no programs that we can participate in that TBA offers." And he suggests that in July, if they don't come out with a program by that time, we have, they're going to pull the meters for the solar panels, and we have to wire it direct. It can help us in our criminal justice center, providing power, but it wouldn't go back to the grid to Southwest. And also, a question was raised about, maybe, since we're having electric cars, and having charging stations, that we might could use the solar panels to put in a charging station. I called and checked on that, they told me that the solar panels wouldn't provide enough power for a charging station. So also, they did inform me at that time, that there was, Henderson County was one of two counties in West Tennessee that was chosen to participate and be offered a charging station. And right now, they're in the process of trying to find a location for that, but we will be one of the first ones, county-wise, to have a charging station for electric cars. But as of now, there isn't a program that we can participate in from Southwest, or TBA on the solar. Next, on the agenda, we have the approval of the author of amendments. I handed committees, showing the chairman out to reach more information. I tried to do my best on selecting the ones that are in our committees. It might not be the exact committee that you, be your preference, but you're welcome to sit in on any of the committees, and if you're interested in that particular project. This is the same list that I sent to you previously in the packet. I just showed the chairman on this list. And I would like to ask for approval of these committees.
Could you name them from where they were?
Yes, sir. I have six committees here, and I have one that's really with the advisory panel, along with the utility providers in our, that supply utilities in our county. The harbor grant funding committees, first, we have the library, Carl Perkins Committee. I have joint projects on these, and still having so many, just about each committee will have either two to three projects to get the information on, and make a decision, give a recommendation to the commission. The first one being the library, Carl Perkins Committee, we have Russell Clayton Chairman, Barry Smith, Joan Alaro, Andrea Holler, Sandra Heinz, Patricia Jones, and Savannah Gill.
May I?
Yes, comment.
This committee will meet over here in the common rectory of government, if that be no problem, it will be a short meeting, but let's talk to the issue.
Thanks. Next will be the DCU, the childcare committee. This with Terry Bell Chairman, Jerry Emerson, Carolyn Higgins, Todd Lewis, Mike Neisser, Carlos Smith, Sylvia Flowers. Next, we have the agriculture, 4A GTA, and the TDE. Jackie Butler Chairman, Ann Moore, Steve Ricken, Neil Smith, John Moore, Bette Serratt, and Lonzo Taylor. Next, we have the old medical building and the elections. Mike Alexander Chairman, Jerry Lo, Kevin Barker, Kim Crow, Stephen Mars, Kathy Best, and Bill Moore. Next, we have the transport station, the recycling department, holding area. Andrea Holler Chairman, Jerry Emerson, Ann Moore, Kim Crow, Amber Green, Todd Lewis, Kevin Barker, Missy Faganoff as an advisor. Next, we have another committee, which will deal with any other that's not listed on here, or new ones that may ask for part of the COVID funding. We have Joan Alaro Chairman, Diane Jordan, Carolyn Higgins, Russell Clayton, Todd Lewis. This being on the back. And also... This will be discussed here in a little bit, I'm a skinny, but I'll, the ones that I would like to participate, being in the meetings, with the TDE grant, and the Tennessee Water Infrastructure Investment Program. This will be Al McKenna, Johnny Garner, Jim Gordon, and Chief Harrow. And also, two mayors will be involved in this. And the water utility providers in our county, that we would like to, if it's to promote and help the citizens of Chester County, we would like to participate and offer the money that is provided to the county, or these provide, that they can use it for any way of helping the citizens of Chester County. Henderson Utility, which is Darrell Green, and that's Superintendent. Adams School Utility, which is Scott Quinn. Sauna Utility, which is Richard Ash. And JEA, which they gave me the name of Jeremy Harrow for this guy. That being the names, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve. We have a motion. I asked for a second, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Kevin Barker, and a second by Commissioner Carolyn Higgins. Any more discussion about these committees?
I would just like to say to the chairman of these committees, just make sure that we did this in time, and be properly notified, and these committees are going to meet, so we may just transfer it as we can on this, because I'm sure people will be going to come and sit in on these committees, so run ahead immediately, just be sure we get both sides of both members.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor of these committees say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Mayor, I got a question. And this committee meeting, and we're going to have a short one here, after the higher major committee, how much money do we have that can be appropriated in fifty days?
We have received half of these funds, and we are supposed to receive the second half of the funds in first of July. Right now, we only have like 1 million, I think, 696 dollars up there. That's close, that might not be exact. But we haven't, go to check for any of it yet. We have placed it to help on the applications for the broadband, to get spread throughout our county, and we also have placed it to help the state in the providing, remodeling of the health department.
That totaled about 220,000, I think.
Yes.
24,7900. But when we were working with this figure today, we can't do the appropriation of the money, we're hoping to get it right, until we get it right.
That's right. What we need to discuss, and as it's rendered, or whatever we can do our best for the citizens of Chester County.
I hope that water ramp is accounted for, or water.
The water infrastructure ramp that we were talking about, Chester County, it was sitting 2.8 million, I believe, except for 2.
2,795,000.
2,795,000. And this is appropriated to help our utility providers, since we, as a county, did not provide the service of the utilities. So we want to provide it for every utility that will help our county. We already had one meeting, I didn't really want to get into that, I just want to let Mr. Jim talk about that, and I'll just leave it at that. We've done that one meeting. And I'd also like to say, as far as on these committees, now that we've approved it, we have an urgent timeline on one. The last few weeks, we had county government day at Nashville on the hill, and I participated, and I went around and visited our governor, and the secretary of state, and our representatives, and our senators. And I tried to advocate some of these projects that we have on these committees tonight, trying to get referrals to possibly have a partnership in some of the funding, where we could spread our funding, and hopefully, help them, and provide funds for each project list. If you choose widely, and we get the proper partnerships, we should be able to help everyone on our project list. But I've been working on the most cost-efficient way to meet the COVID requirements for both Chester County. This referring to the library, and the Carl Perkins Center. They are two county projects that really provide a lot of service for our counties. The R funding request, Mr. Bama gave us a great, she gave us a great presentation for the library, and uses and what was needed there, and the amount of uses it had. And in my mind, and what is she, what she was asking for, I think the region plan would be a good solution for the library, instead of spending the 1.2 million on the existing building, and taking away all the parking lots. And I called, if it's still available, we cannot, we do not have it on agenda tonight, but I believe that would be good, and also for the Carl Perkins Center, they're asking, and Chief, Ms. Kirby, made a great presentation for the Carl Perkins Center. I think that the Carl Perkins Center would do good in our existing library now, and that pretty well suits all their criteria that they're needing, for what they have our county with. And I know these needs to be brought to our committees, that this would be a great need and help in our county. These COVID funds are a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and we need to improve our community with this money.
Do you know?
On the survey, we did it out with the public, and that was the one, that was the two top ones beside the other one that was on our survey. And so, I believe the people's interest is there, and we need to, as soon as possible, have a committee meeting, and discuss this, and we'll have another call meeting where we can discuss more, and I would just leave that on that. Next, on the agenda, we have the ones addressing the mission, which would first, I believe Black, Blackberry, or the chair, is not able to be here, but he is, Mr. Martin, would you like to spend for?
He appealed to the board at the last meeting. The board, we consider abolishing the transition of constables. We're watching for the second reading.
Yes, did y'all, did y'all hear that? We're, he's here tonight, we're asking for the second reading to abolish the constables in our county.
I make the motion to approve on the second reading of the sheriff's partnership request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Tim Grohl, and a second by Commissioner Terry Bell. Is there any more discussion about this? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Next on the agenda, we have the trustee, the grants.
Good evening, again. I just want to give you a kind of a quick summary about the solid waste fee. When we started this last October, our tax losses, we had applied 6,544 fees, in an amount of 549,696 dollars. We added 134 fees to mostly not exempt, taxes exempt, entities, purpose, schools, government buildings, for 11,256 dollars. So when we started the engine, we had, we were shooting for 6,678 parcels that had the fee, and were shooting for 560,952 dollars. We were 89% there. We have collected 5,911 of these parcels, of these fees, for a total of 496,524 dollars. We have uncollected 699 of these fees, for 58,716 dollars. We have deleted 68 of these for various program issues, the different things that the solid waste committee approved, exemptions that they had approved beforehand. So we have taken off 5,712 dollars. The moment feels pretty quick, if you might have a question, or need to repeat something.
What is the criteria that one would be voting for?
The process we went through was pretty strenuous. We even did some site evaluations, mostly taking the information that we had to compile from scratch, looking to see if it had a building or a structure, what kind of structure it had on it, trying to determine whether that was going to be a taxable, or something we could put a fee on or not. For example, poe barns on a piece of farmland, we did not put a fee on there, or if there was one on there, we took that off as part of the 68. There were houses that had burned, been torn down, things like that, and they're just program issues, and we just had to get straight on the tax rate, in the session.
I think you're saying that, I hear that if there's no one there, or not a person to produce trash, that that parcel come off.
What about duplex?
I'm tired of that.
That's coming up.
Amber's going to speak on that in just a minute, but right now, to answer your question, the duplex is considered, we looked per parcel, we built this, we looked per parcel, and if there were multiple buildings, residences, or businesses, we only charged one fee.
Why?
Because that's what the solid waste committee instructed us to do. In fact, since you asked that, the solid waste committee instructed us from the very beginning, there's going to be more out of the beginning, another installation, but we didn't, to clarify, we didn't just add a fee if everything we wanted to, we were asked by the solid waste committee, then the budget committee, then the full commission, minus three months, to charge this fee to raise money for the solid waste program.
I think we discussed these duplexes, and...
We have been discussing for a year and a half now.
From each side. From each side. That was each one, that was... We did talk about it.
We talked about it, yes, sir. But that was not, that was not part of the original plan. What we settled on was per parcel. So if you've got 15 duplexes on one parcel of land, or if you've got 15 mobile homes on one parcel of land, you get one fee. That's what we settled on, that's what the Private Act that passed, the County Commission, four times, three or four times, the state legislature twice, that's what we came up with. And that shouldn't be a surprise, because we talked about this for a year and a half.
I don't remember that one.
Well, I think you were the chairman of the Solid Waste Committee that instigated, that not instigated, that began this process. We knew, and I think others have committed, that we knew years ago when the transaction of the nursing home took place, that things were going to have to change, and we did address it maybe the way we should have. But we did address, started addressing a year and a half ago, and I think you were the chairman of that committee. I think you asked, Danny, to go talk to other Solid Waste Directors, you asked anyone to talk to other trustees, maybe not you personally, but your committee. So I went to talk to other trustees. We looked at different programs, we brought, and Amber made such on this, we brought at least four, for example, four processes we could do that are taking place in other counties. This is the one that we settled with, this $84 fee.
Many things we can't.
That's changed.
Well, that is, that is the responsibility of the Solid Waste Committee, Budget Committee, and as far as I'm concerned, the Full Commission. So we'll do what you want us to do, but that's all we'll do, we're doing what you want us to do. We didn't come up and volunteer, well, we did volunteer, because we want to help the community out. This fee wasn't my idea, it was, it was based on a successful program in a neighboring county. They've had a lot, they've had a lot of success with it. I don't know what's going on here, besides the public outcry, anyway. But that's what the Trustees' Office does, we collect taxes to raise money for you as a commission to spend.
Then you have...
Or you fund it by...
Here's the view and all those departments that are considered one.
Yes, sir.
You know, that came to wrap, man.
With all due respect, and she's fixing to...
Each one of those departments.
But, she's fixing to address this, but I don't, I'm not going to stand here and be accused of something, or this came from a committee that you were the chairman of.
Yes, it was, and I don't remember what you're saying about it.
And I'm sorry, but that's, that's what, we can go back and look at records, that is what's going on. I don't care what people say, it is in records, it's in documents, that this is what we settled with.
We discussed it.
We discussed it.
We discussed the duplexes and apartments and everything.
We did, yes, sir.
And decided that everything that you charge, you should be charged per parcel.
That's what that committee, that's what they decided on, is the Labor Representative, the Budget Committee, who then presented the County Commission.
Honors to the per parcel, not per apartment, okay?
I can understand that.
Excuse me, we will continue this in a little bit, we have a...
One of those things that you're going to go over tonight, what you're talking about, is clarification of permits.
We have Mr. Mike Stoops there here, he's with the state, he can answer the questions along with Ms. Amber Green.
I'm the Solid Waste Director. We have a special guest, that's not, Mike Stoops, very much with the County Technical Assistance Service Program that helps counties with fees. He is an environmental consultant, and he is going to come up and talk about solid waste and try to clarify some of the stuff that we have questions about tonight.
I remember you were at the meeting for that.
Sir?
You were at that meeting.
Was it that night?
No.
He's talking about it last year.
Oh, you... See, that's pure work of the future. It says, by the fact that there's a problem, many of the parcels can have several in one. And we have permits. There's some permits in there, and I got four of those, and one business, and watching us, we had verified what we found, but it has a resolution, it's still out, but it is a residence in any place that people look for it, it is five people's office, five apartments, that's what it is, and by the way, I want to show you one thing, this gentleman right here, he volunteered to do something by collecting it, but 90% of the subsidy not waiting, so I can share that with you. Thank you, maybe one time. Can I, I want everybody, if there's any questions we're going along, please ask me. I want you to be a little present. Can you hear me without a smile? Okay. Trouble here. I can't walk around around that.
No.
But I better warn you, I'm almost there, so y'all will have to repeat your question. Okay, let's go back to Matthew Matt. The federal government had done correctly and have told states, you either come up with a solid waste rule or we'll do it on the federal. If any of you ever did, helped the federal regulate, you don't want that. So the state of Tennessee passed the Solid Waste Act in 1991. Okay, here in Chester County in 1990, you had a landfill that's in process of being closed, and you took all the waste there, that's it. We have 156 landfills in Tennessee. Okay? This act was passed, it says you will provide solid waste services to everyone in the county. Now, county government is set up to provide general services, you know, the schools, roads, insurance, that's a general service, everybody's used everything, solid waste, everybody hopes something away every day. So why not, in 1992, y'all got y'all's first convenience center, y'all were the first ones in the state to get a grant for one green, I know that, I've heard that, with the convenience center, and I have new grant along with finance director, and y'all were ahead of the game. Well, what happens when services are starting to be provided, and it says everybody's invited, Burford comes in and says, well, I'm, we're really going to have, we're going to, well, according to state law, you're really forced to have one, you've got four, I believe. Okay, so if one of these costs money, well, to be able to do this, and provide the services to jump and buy, which by law you're required to reach a goal of 25% recycle, which you have one of the few places in the state that actually made it and come out safely. So what I'm trying to say is, what's being asked, but when I always tell this, is if you're going to put a fee on to take care of these services, make it fair to everyone. And like I said, you're saving 25% because you don't have to set up a billing system, which many counties that have a fee have set up, and runs into working from 80 to 125 thousand dollars a year, just to pay. And the thing that is running your costs, the solid waste, I mentioned earlier, there's 156 landfills, there's 35 in particular, and two of those are going out in the next year and a half. So it's getting rid of it. We, you know, it's the monopoly of having to fight for, getting rid of it. And the other thing, excuse me, is that y'all do have the market, you've got somebody that's marketing here, which a lot of other counties have done, there's a little bit in exchange here, and I don't know if I can even make a little money to take care of the most. Now, I rambled enough, anybody got a question? Why, question, why the things get put on? Well, that's why we need to clarify, because we're putting down this department, well, under state law, a parcel is to be smart, well, that's why we want to clarify that.
It needs to be clarified, because each person that produces garbage in an apartment should be, should be charged with it, to make it fair to everyone else.
The whole thing, when you're dealing with solid waste, no matter if it's in the city or out of county, and I'm talking all of you, it needs to be fair, it needs to be balanced.
All right, I'm going to get started and go through our budget, and I've got six pages to read, everybody, so make this complete. Solid waste has two budget lines. The first line has 559,961. Our second budget has 548,190. That total is about 1.1 million dollars. So the cost to operate four county convenience centers, and this is the ones in K O, Helicopter Chicksaw, K Springs, it's 180,000 dollars a year, that's for four. To bury city and county trash in landfill, it's 310,000 dollars. Operations to run a main center, which is over here on Tally Store Road, is 379,961. That leaves us, after that million dollars, 238,290. That is for equipment, box repairs, to run our burn hall, leachages, bracers, we have to have metal to fix the boxes, we have hydraulic leads, motors, compactors going down, that 238,000 dollars for equipment repairs. So to run four county convenience centers and to bury trash, which is 310,000 dollars, that total is 490,000 dollars. And I think Lance said we collected 496,524. So we have a meeting March the 8th at the Solid Waste Department, and I'm going to go through the meeting and the minutes and talk about the resolution that we have tonight. The Solid Waste Committee and the County Technical Assistance Service talked during our meeting in March, and they decided a resolution was needed. When the Private Act was approved by Commission, we did the billing by parcel. We now have a resolution to include apartments, residential condominium units, duplexes, townhomes, mobile homes, and other dwellings, because there are multiple residents on certain parcels. An example of this, and I'm not picking on anyone, but it's Arlington State, they got one deal, and they should have gotten multiple deals, and that's just an example. Adrian Holland made a recommendation to create a resolution to make amendment and exclusions to the solid waste fee, and Captain Faulner said it. While we were talking about this, the budget director said it will take three years from start to finish to collect the money. The first year is usually 95% collected, the second year is 3%, and the third year is 2% when it goes to curtain master. We also talked about tax relief, veterans and elderly people. Lance said if the Commissioner decided to exempt the 326 tax relief residents, 35 veterans, nine widows and veterans, 39 disabled residents, that amount would be 27,384 to exempt them. After a long discussion, at this time, the Solid Waste Committee decided to not exempt anyone from the fee, because we need to work through the fee first and make sure everyone is received in the field. The resolution the Solid Waste Committee, C Task, and I have recommended before County Commission tonight, says the total bill for the solid waste disposal fee services shall be sent to the property owner as listed on the property tax roll. Apartments, residential condominium units, duplexes, townhomes, mobile homes, and other dwellings with residents will be sent to the property owner on the tax notice. It also states all nonprofits, churches, schools, colleges, daycares, recreational entities, or any place that releases trash, non the property tax roll, will be sent a yearly, a bill yearly by the Trustees' Office. Does anyone have any questions before I ask for a motion for the resolution, about the resolution? Did that cover your question, Mr. Butler?
One more thing here on this number seven down here, all nonprofits, churches, schools, hospitals, daycare, center, and all.
That way it's going out?
We have, I don't like to, I'm here to tell you.
Right.
So does that include each one of those parts separately?
It does. This resolution covers all of that, Heritage Towers, Arlington State, any other apartment complex you can think of, it includes everybody.
It includes each one of those areas?
Yes.
Okay. Now then, not picking on the public, because I think it's a great asset to, you know, they also have several places that excuse the, now, is that included as a separate address for?
Right now with the...
The dorms and everything, what I'm talking about.
Right now, they pay the $84 fee one time, and they actually have a compactor truck that picks up their trash, and they're paying $60 a ton of the scales. That's what we're doing with them right now. But this does cover them to send each, for the state of Detroit again, and their residents, a bill. But we have to look at that, we'll have to go there with the Solid Waste Committee and see if we send each dorm a bill, how many dorms they have, the offices, but we have to break all that down.
Do you have a close number of parcels that are, you say 5,000 homes, 6,000, 7,000? What's the number on the parcel in the county that you collect solid waste fees from?
I do not have a number at this time.
Wow. We've had this over a year, and we've never gotten it, what was it, Ross?
I will be respectful to the Commission and to the Friday. But this has been a very trying year, we have done everything that the committee has asked us to do, and it seems like we are fairly dislone by ourselves. I see Facebook posts slapping us like crazy, I don't see many people taking up for us. And that's okay, I don't blame you, I wouldn't either, get on Facebooks on these crazy people that might want to do it, but we are getting no help from public. And I'll speak to my staff, we've been through it this year, we have, it's been a very tough year, we knew it was going to be tough, we were warned from the county that we took this program from, that it was going to be rough, first couple of years. We made it through, but it's been tough. Okay, now, I don't know, the accessory will have to tell you this, but I don't know if the accessory can tell you exactly how many buildings, houses, buses, cabins, different reasons they don't, they don't request that, somewhat correct, that we don't, the buses, the tents, things like that.
That is correct.
Okay, so, but you're wanting to send a bill to a bus, to someone living in a bus in a tent city, or to a tent. You know, when we, Hartman County took their program, we based it off Hartman County. Their accessory gave them plenty of information to get this done, to get started, we basically started from scratch. We have added tents, we've added buses, cabins, things that's not on the tax, that's not easily available on the accessory's website.
I think when we kind of saw the basic, the very first...
I mean, yes.
We, well, we looked at this, and that's what we pulled our information from to collect the fee, do you remember that discussion?
I don't remember that, but I'm going to make something real clear, I'm not slaying your office or anyone else's office, I only just want this information, I just have to place people in information, and give me the closest thing you can to it, and... it, and just for instance, the places like, oh, Mount Pleasant Hill back there, where they go all the way over the shacks, and they have that thing in Hardin County, I'm not that bad.
Sure.
Are you, do they get it big?
As, as far as I, yes sir. As far as I know, uh, have I driven out there and looked at that one address that you're talking about, no, I have not. Have we researched it, the best we can do is one employee, because honestly, we have other, other obligations to the trustees office, so I have one dedicated for, for the solid waste program. And I, I, I think we agree on all of that team before we, we started that. But based on, uh, on any research that we can do, Google Maps, uh, the session website, uh, just knowing that the next door neighbor, we, we have tried to get everything that, that the committee asked us to bill, we have tried to get that on tax roll. Have we missed some? Yes, we have. Have we added some? I think we had, and sixty-eight, we had to take off because there was, they were not due to be, for whatever reason. But, it is virtually impossible. We can go by census numbers. Census numbers, those from federal government, um, that's not gonna tell you very high percentage of county. So, I, I cannot tell you, I mean, I, I don't, I'm not sure, if the session knows how we, uh, she can get up and address that, I don't think there's a, that you can get a number of houses in Chester County.
So, we don't know how many houses are paying taxes in Chester County?
We don't have any parcels to pay, to pay, that's, that's all I can, all I can tell you.
Left now, I want you to look at it, four hundred and eighty, ninety thousand dollars, that's less than six thousand parcel.
Four hundred ninety-six thousand five hundred twenty-four.
Yeah, I still want to speak, you, you're wrong numbers. Yes, we, we collected fifty-nine hundred and eleven feet lost, out of sixty-six hundred and seventy-eight. We have six hundred ninety-nine left to collect, we hope to get, we, we will get most of that by June thirtieth, that's just our property taxes. For ninety-two, collecting right now, make a little bit of, and then, we'll get a big chunk of that by June thirtieth, and there will be some, keep going.
One way to back, number seven, section seven, as doing nonprofits and the whole list.
Right.
The revenue that will come from that, is that needed?
Yes. It is. Um, everyone has to have, because the solid waste committee decided, uh, this is not either a decision, but we talked the other night, they decided not to, it said anyone from the fee at this time.
Now, I gotta see that, let me give it a check. Is the revenue that's gonna produce absolutely needed?
I have no idea how much revenue we get from nonprofits, I don't know, I cannot answer that right now, I will answer the next meeting for you.
What I, yeah, I, what I don't want to happen is, now, for, eight, twenty-five thousand dollars bill going free hard, and then, then Heritage Tower, I get that, we're, I'm not that great.
Right. That is something the solid waste committee, after we approve this resolution, we have to talk through that. That's the best I can achieve right now.
One more thing, we've been going office for, like, twenty-twenty, since June twenty-twenty I think, but it is a good problem. It, it's, it's something that, uh, it's, I hate to say it's found there, we're, we're, we're trying to get the revenue needed to fund the, to fund the solid waste program, but we are the state, and we're gonna correct them, be better next year. So, we ask for your patience and understanding of that. Right?
All right, thank you, Mr. Lance, since there, uh, since there, hopefully, questions have been made for clarification on the billing cycle, we have a resolution here to, that clarifies the terms, and the terms that you asked about will be on this sheet in, uh, and this is, uh, resolution for regarding the classification of terms for Chester County's usage with respect to the solid waste fees. And that's what we're asking for at this time, it might be modified next year, but it'll have to be going according to the, the statistics for the year.
Can I say something before you, before we go, better? C Task helped me write this resolution, it went before their terms as well, uh, so do not think that I wrote this resolution alone, because I'm the one.
Is there any more questions about that, while we have this land to stay here?
I'm just like, clear, this doesn't increase the fee in any way.
No.
We're, we're not worried about this, this is a review. Happens, because Mr. Butler, that, that was this for, the original private act, it said parcel net, and this is clarified, who receives it.
I'm talking about the individual parcel fee, not the increase. I'm gonna be clear, what we're talking about.
Unless you're the individual that owns the parcel, that fits class.
What was that?
If I wanted to be fired, so, so, I'm gonna commit to that.
Yes.
May I address the board?
Yes, ma'am.
Actually, the private act does not refer to parcels, it refers to property owners. So, in commission of other defendants, it does not say parcels. Uh, that isn't in the private act that was passed, um, by this commission.
So, my, the original, I thought, uh, you should come along, but that's what our party for, to, 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 it ain't moral, because we just, I don't want to do it. So, we're asking for a resolution from, uh, section one, all the way through to section eight, is that right, ma'am?
Yes, sir. And then, section nine, they're going to reserve for future use, because we're going to have to make changes because it is not perfect. So, that is why we see that in there, it says reserve for future use.
This, the way I understand it, should clarify everything I was talking about.
Yes, sir.
All right, do we hear a motion for this resolution? We have a motion for resolution by commission of Jake and Rob.
As Blackman.
We have a second, by commission of Jake and Rob. Is there any more discussion? If not, I'm gonna say for say, ah?
Ah.
Any applause?
Alright, I'm gonna keep going, try to be quick as I can, there's this, last year Chester County recycled two thousand two hundred and eighty-six tons of material that consisted of paper, plastic, wood, and these cardboard, aluminum, steel, paint, e-wax, glass, and陶料. This saved our county over ninety thousand dollars from diverting those materials from a landfill. Recycling does not cost this county any money. The money you save in budget to run recycling operations comes from the diversion rate, charging a fee to other cities, counties, and businesses to process the material and to sell the recycling. What that looks like is a ninety thousand dollar diversion rate, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the sale of recycling, and a hundred and seven thousand dollars for the fee that we charge in cities, counties, and businesses. Uh, that totals four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Um, as of March first, the sale of recycling, we have sold two hundred and thirty thousand dollars of the supposed sale in our budget, plus an additional hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of material that's been sold. And I know a lot of you have questions, why can you not take that money and bury it in very much ash? If you take the money away from the recycling center, you're gonna close it down, you're gonna lose your diversion rate, you're not gonna be able to recycle, uh, because the money that's in the budget for the sale of recycling is how we run that facility, it's how we file wire, it's how we keep the sort line going, it's how we have employees. So, when you recycle, you actually provide jobs for this county. Uh, we have three full-time people that work in that building. Um, so I'm gonna ask a question real quick. So, how many people recycle? Raise your hand, if you don't mind, thank you. Alright, the ones that didn't raise their hand, can you tell me why? I'm just curious, I just, I educate people, I've done this for fifteen years, educate people. Billboards, newsletters, social media, talking to kids, talking to future generations, so if you don't recycle, I'm just curious, did you not know about a program that we've had for fifteen years? Did you not know that it saves this county money on the landfill bill? Because we saved ninety thousand dollars this last year, if these people that recycle, did not recycle, you will be paying four hundred thousand dollars this year in very much, so three hundred and ten thousand. So, being able to call me into office and let me know why you don't recycle, seriously, I need to know, because I spend a lot of time educating and trying to build our programs up for education outreach, and it saves the county money. Alright.
And a lot of people say for eighty-four dollars a year, if you only recycle, if y'all recycle.
What, the trash?
Yep.
I didn't, I didn't save any.
A lot of people are saying that to recycle, that they weren't recycling until we started collecting the eighty-four dollars.
Right, so now-
And now, they're saying that, I gotta pay you-
Because they're mad, because they're paying the fee. So, now, here's what's gonna happen, when you stop recycling, your fee is gonna go up in less than five years, because you stopped recycling. So, in five years, we're gonna have to decrease this fee if we don't do something now. Our waste connection contract was signed this January, it was forty-one thirty-two a ton to get rid of trash. In five years or less, it's going to eighty dollars a ton. So, it's going from three hundred and ten thousand dollars to six hundred thousand dollars. One way you can fix that is recycling. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, but it's probably a really playful, a lot of, a lot of-
I mean, I don't know how, I spent fifteen years teaching this, and I don't know how to, I don't know how to get you to recycle. I mean, I asked, I begged, we pleaded, I talked to your children, they come home and ask you, your grandbabies, I don't know what else to do. So, in five years, your fee is going to increase if you do not start recycling now. Everybody in town, that, yes, sir?
And, yeah, this one. I don't understand how recycling is, because obviously, everything goes in here, you weigh it, it doesn't go to landfills, it breaks lots of bags for you.
That's fair.
It's just, size is the right thing to do, eventually-
We're saving your money too, it's not even-
Eventually, we'll pull up all these duck bowls, we'll go landfills, and something's gonna be done.
Right.
But, I want to say, that as a person who works in Madison County, and for years, had picked up, DUI a little pickup all the time, all the crew, dealing with their community sites, dealing with their dump, versus dealing with this one, in other counties, if you've ever leave this county and try to deal with any other solid waste, you come back, just like I did when I got back in Madison, saying you are gonna kiss the ground, but this place, Chester County Solid Waste Program is so much simpler, so much easier. If you got something, if you wanna paint, you can just paint out there and put it in the box. If you guys wrote right, they will help you put it in dumpster.
If, if you ask, let me know that.
They ask for, and they go knock out of town, that's not my job.
At the moment, if you drop your furniture on the ground, we will take it back, go pick it up, but, but since we're talking about it, my foreman and I have been working on, we have dropped two boxes in the ground, we're gonna bag up to these boxes, and you're gonna be able to push your fur and drop, it's gonna be the best thing ever, I promise you. Uh, so we almost have that finished, we are still working on it, as soon as it gets drawn up, you won't have to lift furniture, you want some boxes. Does that help? That should help you.
But, to say that, you're talking about the new cycle. Go anywhere else, and they will not do it at all for you, in any way, shape, or fashion, they'll tell you, they'll have days that you can bring it.
I mean, Carroll County, they didn't do their trash.
Any day of the year that they're open, you go out there, I promise you, it is, whether you, whether you make, maybe you can improve it, as long as you can.
We're working-
I promise you, in comparison, Madison County, or any other county in this area, it is so much simpler, and I'll tell you a big difference, if you need to grab, if you go to Jackson, and you can go around and pick up all those communities, you'll find piles of trash, pile, all kinds of stuff, all over the place. The reason why, is because they got no place to put it, and the cheapest thing they could do is to dump it on the corner right in the middle of the city, and it's sickening to make a watch. Because I walk up there and care about the place, because I was working, but here, you don't see it, at least not here as much.
No. We have an amazing litter free person, it's Mark, I don't know if any of you have ever met him, uh, he's the tailor that takes our inmates out, and I would love to brag him, because he does keep our county clean and litter free, that is, that's his main job to do.
Say one thing on that. Thank you, Sheriff, for doing that, because I know sheriffs partners in this state that have litter brands, and they have the ability, but they don't let people do it. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you. Alright, anybody have a question for our recycling, or keep going to the next one? Yes, sir?
Alright, about recycling, cardboard, plastic, is there a market for it now?
There is, let's talk about that. So, with COVID-
Whatever else can you get your recycling, from which cities that surround you, do you take them from, and do you charge them to take them?
Yes, let me talk about that for just a second. Alright, so during COVID, recycling dropped some, we still had, the cardboard was ninety dollars a ton. Recycling runs with the stock market, and plastic runs with gas prices. Boy, plastic is amazing right now, because everybody's gas is going up. Uh, so, right now, for milk jugs alone, we get a thousand and thirty dollars a ton. We only have four truckloads a year go out, we're looking at twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars a truckload, depending on the weight. Plastic, your number one water bottles, that everybody drinks, six hundred and eighty dollars a ton. During COVID, it was two hundred and ten dollars a ton. That tells you the difference in the prices and how, how recycling runs. Uh, and I used a broker, they actually send me a price every week, I send our products to Kimberly Clark, I tell them, give paper tiles and tissue come from your homework, because our schools recycle, so they actually take kids' paper and turn it into paper tiles and tissues, so I tell them, that's other nose and our homework, and they think it's the greatest thing in the world. Uh, in the raw, they give our plastic water bottles, they actually take it, melt it down, put it in their t-shirts, and it's in their pocket. Uh, so there is a market for recycling right now, and that's why we've made the additional hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So, we've actually made three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for the sale of recycling this year, but I cannot take that money in very trash with it, because you will close my recycling center down, because that is how we operate. We partner with thirteen cities and counties. Uh, Carterville dropped seventy-five miles here to bring us their recycling in a fifty-three foot van trailer. We charged them thirty-five dollars a ton to process that recycling, and then it gets contaminated, so contamination means, plastic bags, cat litter buckets, clothes baskets, toilet, sinks, dirty diapers, fabric tissue, any of that stuff is in there, we deal waste on it on every load and break. If there's more waste in there than what my mouth's gonna touch, because you know so, you would, when I work in the sort line, I come in thirty-two dirty diapers an hour. So, there's cat litter bags that come down there, there are needles that come down the line that's not supposed to be, so we charge them ninety dollars a ton, because we have to landfill that stuff. And our, our tin and tin home fees, forty-one thirty-two. So, we actually make money from those cities and counties coming here. Uh, Hardin County comes here, Addisville, McNary, Selmer, uh, Henderson County does come sometimes, Hardin County does come, Lakeland comes, the city of Henderson comes. City Henderson does not pay that fee, just to clarify. Uh, Lakeland has just signed a contract, and they are also headed here this year with their recycling. That does not cost this county any money, it actually helps your county make money, and it helps me run the recycling hub and stuff. That answer your question? Okay. Anybody else have any more questions? What about all these, anybody in the audience have any questions? I just wanted to make sure I get everybody's question, I don't want anybody to wait here and not understand. Okay. Yes, sir?
What's the percentage rate, recycling county versus city?
Eighteen percent of people in the county recycle, forty-two percent of people in the city recycle. The city of Henderson has a fabulous recycling rate, their materials are perfect, the guys do a wonderful job that run the recycling route, they check the carts, make sure there's no trash in them. Uh, I wish the county had that same recycling rate, because it would definitely help with our landfill bill, um, that's fixing to go up in less than five years.
Did your recycling go up, or did you go down, passing the fast date, four dollars a week?
It actually went up two hundred and twenty tons this year.
Lord.
For this county, this county recycled two thousand two hundred and eighty-six tons. I keep a five-year chart in the email that I send everyone you, there is a chart with a bunch of numbers that says annual progress report at the top. It has the last five years recycling, it has trash for city and county, it has the commercial haulers, and how much they bring out there, it has every person that brings recycling from another county on there, and how much they bring, it has our diversion rate, which was sixty-two percent for this last year. Uh, T D requires us to divert twenty-five percent, for sixty-two percent for just Chester County. We have a lot of residents that recycle, and on sub-precious, and we have a lot of businesses that recycle. We have over a hundred businesses here that we pick up cardboard from every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, we have a program in our schools, they do a package on the company. Uh, we have a lot of businesses, we pick up paper, aluminum, and plastic, chrome, and silver.
Amber, I have the same question we had the other day, but if you don't recycle, um, from the city and the county, that would just- Amber, I have the same question we had the other day, but if you don't recycle from the city or the county, that would just go into the landfill and increase the cost.
Yes, that landfill bill is gonna go up for this county, and it's gonna cost this county more money if you do not recycle. Thank you.
And also, if anyone, I believe I can tell you this, if anyone in the county would like a recycling cart to keep yours up,
Yes, sir.
Contact me and say...
We have ninety-six gallon recycling carts that we give out to Chester County residents and the City of Henderson. You're welcome to contact me and office if you want one, and we also still do give out blue recycling bags, because we do have elderly residents that does not live in a ninety-six gallon cart at our community center. Okay, I'm gonna keep going. All right, next we have waste and energy. So the solid waste committee, purchasing committee, Mayor, TDA, and I have been working with a waste and energy company for the last sixteen months. This company is going to come in and build the side of the recycling hub and spoke on television or whatever. The waste and energy company is willing to form a partnership with the recycling hub to tackle the increasing cost of waste disposal by expanding local material recycling opportunities. The company will help process hard recycled plastics number three through seven that the recycling hub cannot recycle now. We only recycle one and two plastics currently. The issue with the project will create new jobs, generate clean renewable energy that will power the company's facility and their recycling hub, and it will bring in some revenue from the solid waste department in the county. This project is ongoing and will be talked about during upcoming committee meetings over the next few months. Basically, what I just said, there's a company willing to come here and help us. One and two plastics is all we recycle now. This company would be able to take plastic chairs, waste cans, cat litter buckets, plastic bags, bread wrappers, kids' toys with no batteries in it, spare plastic liners, flower pots, baby bottles, sippy cups, anything that's plastic, and actually turn it into diesel fuel, because there is all the plastic. So I wanted everyone to be aware that we have been working on this project, because I know some commissioners ask, what can we do to not put this fee in place? There was nothing at the time, because I know Mr. Joe asked us, because I remember him asking. But we have been working on this project for the last sixteen months. Now, what project, it's gonna take two to five years to probably actually happen. Just know that we are working on it with our Chamber of Commerce, a lot of senators, and a lot of people at TDA. Do they have any questions before I keep going? Okay. Transfer station, let's do that. So a gravity flow transfer station system is a concrete pad that you can back a truck to, and dump, and it goes into a hole. We have a transfer station now, yes. It is set up for a receiver box that holds twelve tons. The reason this was on the ARPA code funding survey is because this transfer station would be set up for a semi. This would help our department haul twenty tons of trash instead of twelve tons. Because our receiver boxes, they hold fifteen tons, but currently waste nations will only let us put twelve to thirteen tons in them. So this would be one way that would save on our automobile. It would also save my truck driver. So we pick up boxes out of county centers, we haul twenty-five plus furniture boxes a week to sell, coming from all five centers. You guys have a lot of furniture in this county, I'm telling you. Eight hundred and fifty-eight tons of bits out from last year. So the burners pick it up at the county and haul to the main center, and then we weigh in and we haul it to Selmer. If we got a semi transfer station, this would cut my truck driver's time in half. It would help the residents unload large items like furniture. So since we just dropped these boxes in the ground that we have now, that I was just talking about, where did you go over here? We would actually turn those boxes in the ground to metal, and then everyone would dump furniture, construction, demolition, and trash in the transfer station. I had a business call in a few months ago, Amber, I don't mind paying the fee, but please tell me there's a plan. He said, because I drive past your facility ten times a day with open top box. He said, I'm going to license a transfer station. He said, you know, is there, there's some kind of plan? So that's one reason we started looking at this transfer station. It would help the businesses in this county. So we are only set up for household trash right now. This transfer station would actually help solid waste set up for businesses and residents. And it would be very convenient, because you're just backing in on a concrete pad and dumping. And then you take it back, go, you pack the semi, the van trailer that it has, and it's got more trash or furniture. You pack it, and then they would haul it to the landfill. The transfer station would make some money. It would take two, three years before it would actually make money. But I mean, you have to start somewhere. So I was looking for ways to help solid waste, because providing services costs money. So what I've been trying to do the last few months is figure out where can we make some revenue? I'm going to, so at the meeting on March eighteenth, Tim made the motion to get a quote and cost analysis information for the transfer station for Chester County Solid Waste and present to the ARPA funding committee once it is appointed by the mayor, and Mr. Jerry Emerson seconded it. So I'm gonna spend the next month getting quotes, how much it costs to run it, how much money would it save this county? And then I'm going to present that to the committee. So does anyone have any questions about the transfer station? Before I keep going? Okay. All right, and then next we have upcoming events. April first, we are hosting a trash exercise event. It's where we have the high school come out, the kids actually exercise, and then they clean up trash off the road. It is one of the most fun events we've ever done in our office. You guys are welcome to come, it starts at nine-thirty, April the first. You can help us pick up the litter that Mr. Terry was talking about. April second, we are hosting a tarp event. So the purpose of this tarp event, because community centers are litter, because y'all are bringing trash into the centers, and it's blowed out of the back of your trucks. The mayor asked that everyone tarp the loads. This event is funded by Keaton Tennessee Beautiful, and the tarts are free. We were gonna have this last Saturday, and you'd know that I was not expecting, we had to move the event to April the second. So you guys are welcome to come get a tarp. We will have the building open for tours. If you've never seen our recycling building, please come see me. You will be amazed at what is out there. We have six point five million dollars worth of equipment in our recycling center. And I think more than half the people in this county do not have any idea of this out there. Does anyone else have any questions? Sorry I took so long, anybody in the audience have any questions? You have questions?
Did I hear you correctly, if this company comes and you can take the plastic, make it to your, if all this goes as planned, you would possibly be able to reduce, if not even remove, that fee?
We can't remove the fee, and I can't make that promise, because I don't know until we work through this company, see what it would actually look like. It would increase traffic out of Scale House, because obviously, there's gonna be businesses bringing in more plastic. So it would be set up like the model we have now, where we charge the county thirty-five dollars. So we would get revenue from that. Anything else we're working out with the company has to go through the committees and be approved by county commission. But there is a possibility that we do not have to increase the fee in the future if we get enough revenue from this facility. I'm not saying it's gonna work, I'm looking for ways to help this county. Anybody else have any questions? Yes, sir?
I thought you said all the recycling money had to stay in recycling, so we could never reduce our fee, because they have to always stay in recycling?
No, so the recycling hub and spoke money has to stay at the recycling center, because that's how we operate. This company is a company that's wanting to come here to actually help us bring in more revenue. So more money would be coming in, and it wouldn't actually be used in the recycling center. We would actually have some money left over. And I don't notice, I've just been going through the state and trying to figure the project out. But we would hope that we would actually collect more money than what we need to run the recycling hub and spoke, so we would have extra revenue left. Does that make sense?
That would be, I would dream of it.
I know, but I'm looking for ways to go for county and create revenue, because like I said, burying landfill costs money. This company actually reached out to us sixteen months ago. And that's why I'm working with senators, and state officials, and state highs, and TDA, and TDOT, to try to figure out exactly what this project looks like.
One question.
Yes, sir?
Six point five million in recycling, so how much is that to pay for county versus state capital?
There was a hundred thousand dollar match on all of those grants, I think it was six point five million. We had a hundred thousand dollar match on that last grant, and that was it, the rest of it was...
How much of that was in cash? Maybe it was not actual cash?
A hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, I think, was on this last one point two million dollar grant, and the rest of them, they didn't come out.
So why is it paid for by state capital?
Yeah, by TDA. The former Solid Waste Network worked with Harder County years ago. The TDA knows the partnership, they wanted to make it bigger, and that is how our hub and spoke got started. TDA gave us grant money to start their recycling hub and spoke. There is, now, let's talk about MERS, Material Recovery Facility. That is what we have in this county. There is only nine in the state of Tennessee. Five of them are privately owned, four of them are county owned. Most people do not have what we have. If you go to any other county, they don't have it. Go to Carroll County, they can't even get their trash picked up right now, because they have mandatory door to door trash. McNary County's having trouble. That is why they collect the material and bring it to me, and I make the processor at the recycling hub and spoke, and that is what we do. That is why we make money. All these other counties have recycling programs, they don't have the people to, or the money, to actually process their recyclables. So they bring it to us, and that is what we do. Is there any more questions?
Okay, thank you.
Sorry I took so long. Thank you, thank you, Amber.
Tell her good job.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, the City of Henderson.
Well, maybe I'll talk as long as I have to. Anyway, what we're talking about is TDA money. Now, sorry, let's explain, TDA, well, federal government's money to the state of Tennessee. The state of Tennessee set aside one billion dollars to TDA for water, wastewater, and stormwater projects in this state. In order to qualify for a stormwater project, you have to be a permitted S-oh-four, or whatever their permit is. Luckily, Chester County is not required to do that with City Henderson. So that's a very costly thing, so. Number one is this money cannot be used for stormwater in Chester County. So the only two things it can be used for is drinking water and wastewater. And the total dollars received is, Chester County, based on population, other former lead, got the two point seven nine five million dollars. The City of Henderson received one point two oh six million dollars for water and wastewater improvements. Okay. This form is changing every day, to some extent, just like a lot of the ARP funds have. We got updated, fifty-one page is worth of information on Friday morning. So that's how deep this is. We did meet Friday afternoon with Barry Hudson, our utility director, by Captain C. Mayor, and we discussed this money briefly. We, thanks Barry, did reach out to Selmer, Adamsville, and JDA to try to get them to participate. They did not come to the meeting, but we are, we still communicating with them to give them the opportunity to ask for some of these funds if they want to. So number one is, this is a grant coming from state TDA, and first thing I will tell you is free is not free. In this case, for utilities, this is not necessarily free money. They provide the cash, but anything we do with this money and all other grant funds, the city utility department, and its customers have to fund depreciation on these funds, just like we use our own money to do it. So, you know, I know some of the other ARP funds, you can use them for things that doesn't actually cost the county or the city money. In this case, it's gonna cost our customers to use this money. Number one, it's not free. Number two is, there is a local match. The local match, depending on which part of the money and how we go about applying, it's gonna be fifteen percent, or it may be lower to ten. That's something that we've got to discuss on how to go about doing the application to include a ten percent match versus a fifteen percent match. So that is another cost. There's also problems with this money because of the timeline involved. It's just like any other ARP funds. The one difference is, we gotta be complete and thorough with the project and submit to the state by September twenty-twenty-six. It's gotta be under contract by the end of April, I mean, end of twenty-twenty-four, just like other ARP funds. There's also, because everybody statewide is gonna be doing this type of projects. There's gonna be a shortage of engineers, a shortage of contractors that are licensed to do this work, and also a shortage of materials. Right now, the time for some materials is six months out, and the price is changing daily. So this will be awful hard to get these products in the process, price them, get them there. And contractors will be scared to death, because they're not gonna want materials that will follow them, but they're gonna make deadlines. So this is a moving target that we're having to work out. So the application period for this money starts as early as April fourth, which is sort of funny, considering we just got a place the Friday. That is for a collaborative project. And I consider a collaborative project when the county works with the utilities in their county and come up with a project that is best for the county as a whole. And so that's talking about mainly the money that the county receives. So Chester County will be asked at some point to dig out this two point seven nine five million to water and wastewater utilities to do projects, if the utilities want some of us. It may be the case that Adamsville, Selmer, which serves both the east end and the west end of our county, may not want it. Because they're dealing with a pot of money also in their home county, and in their home cities they're having to deal with. So, but we're trying, Mayor, the question is reaching out to them to try to figure out if they're interested, number one. JDA also has a few customers in the north part of the county, I don't know, five points, maybe toward Midland, and maybe a few at Pinson, I don't know exactly how many they got, it's very few. But they could even qualify, maybe, for some of this money. So that's one thing we're working through. And, you know, we already talked about utilities, where city have water and wastewater both here, the other utilities only have water in our county. So as we move forward, the first thing that every city has, every utility has, and I say city, because it's where it's sitting, has to do is scorecard on their utility system. That scorecard ranks their entire system based on their system, their processes, their procedures, everything. The age of their systems, et cetera. And that scorecard is what TDA is going to use to determine whether you're gonna get money or not. So in our case, Darryl over there, he's here, Darryl has been working for two weeks or more, and Alicia over here has too, on this scorecard. And it's almost complete with that. That scorecard is gonna show where the City of Henderson utility department has deficiencies, our needs are proven. So TDA is going to be looking at that scorecard being provided before we even can apply. They're gonna apply those weaknesses to this grant application, and if we don't actually apply it in those categories, we're not gonna get money, whether it's the city's money, or the county's money, or wherever, we're not gonna get money. So we're gonna be somewhat restricted what we can do with these funds. So we are in the process of evaluating issues we have in our system, both water and wastewater. We are coming up with a plan, and we are, the main things we are looking at are, and this is general in nature, I'm not keeping you on, I'm a peanut milk for certain. There is a meeting on April twelfth that has just been scheduled, that's gonna explain this more detail with TDA and Jackson. And we're all, the three of us are going to that meeting. So a little more hopefully after that April twelfth meeting, excuse me. But some of the things we are looking at doing in water system, we're looking at upgrading undersized and aged cast iron water mains. In our system, we have still some four-inch cast iron mains that's been in the ground since the, probably twenties, and have never been upgraded, twenties and thirties, they need to be upgraded. We also have some outdated water controls in the water plant that were put in, the plant was put in about nineteen sixty-six, that have never been upgraded. We also have our sewer lift stations that are aged and are not working properly. We're looking at that as a possible project. And then also, we're looking into addressing some I-N-I issues, which is infiltration of wastewater into our wastewater system, which actually overworks our lagoon and makes us, it's seen in our permit called outflowing for whatever. So these are some things we're discussing at this point. We're not asking for any decisions tonight, but I just want to make you aware, and we're here to answer any questions you might have, and we'll try to answer them as best we can about the grant sale and what the plans are. You have any questions for myself or Darryl?
Yes.
So all you're talking about there, in the, in the city, nothing for the county, is that correct?
The biggest part of it is, the biggest part is work due to the age of the system, yeah, will be in the system. Of course, the previous to the water plant will be for the entire system, and some of these main projects we're doing actually increases flow throughout the entire system, which goes out and does serve the county.
Very little.
Very little, yes, but I'll be truthful, I'll be honest with you, you know, it's due to the age of the infrastructure that we have here in the city.
All that's... All that plans to go further out in the county at any time?
Currently, the way this is working and the way we understand it, they're not going to prove an expansion with these funds. Now, I'm not the expert, we'll know more in the coming months. But the way I understand it today, the way of our regulations, you cannot use these funds for expansion. So, and as I said, the scorecards will dictate what you have to apply. And sellers will be in the same situation, Adamsville's in the same situation, show a little JBA.
On behalf of all of those who live in the city, just reminder to everybody that lives not in the city, that we are still in the county.
Yes, we are.
If it's your whole tribe, it's the same part of the city.
But I'll be more happy to answer your questions. We're not asking for decisions tonight, we'll be working with county mayor. And this will be also along with a word with T-Ded, trying to make sure we can move forward with the projects. We're not sure we need all the county's land, our county will afford to use all the county's land, because that's going to be a rate increase to all of our customers. So we're going to be careful and weigh the ability to get projects done, the cost of those projects and the benefit versus, you know, how much of this money we'll use. We'll use all the city of Henderson's funds, of course. And then we would probably ask for a portion, maybe the entire amount of the town if nobody else asks for it, but we don't know that tonight. And we'll know when we get more details. But that's what we're working on.
We're looking for expansion some way to...
I understand, but I think this part of money, they tied it down, T-Ded has tied this money down, or I don't think this is the part of money we can use. And, you know, I understand that totally. And so, you know, we'll, you know, if you want to contact us and sell, Darrell, the top more details about any certain area and the issues, you know, a water system is just not as easy as it is in the factory. You know, the pressures involved, there's elevations, there are a lot of issues that come into play of whether you can serve. And the regulations that we have to follow to make sure we are meeting the state guidelines. Last thing we'll move to the system, well, if they will house put a system, then definitely the state guidelines and the pressures and water quality. Now, what else has anybody?
One other thing.
Yes?
Will all these improvements possibly make future industrial development likely through the high, the high infrastructure being repaired or that?
Well, one of the big issues we have with industrial recruitment here in this county is the limitations of our wastewater system. And that's because of the type of system it is, is a lagoon versus a treatment plant of some sort. So any industry that comes in here that has waste, that will have certain limits, we do have to have pre-treatment before it comes into our system. We are also limited by the number of gallons of waste we can take off. I get requests from industries that are looking for sites. I had probably last month had three or four. But their request for water and mainly wastewater usage is so great that our system will not handle it. And that's where the I-N-I becomes an issue with our lagoons. We somehow got stopped some of this excessive flow from regular water getting into the system where we can actually allow for more expansion for other customers, whether it be residential or industry. But it is a big deterrent to have this type of system for industrial, industrial recovery. Darrell, you have anything to say?
Thank you, our addition, this, in the scorecard, there's like several different items in the scorecard. They can put extra asset page, those water assessment, wastewater assessments, and not only we have to do one assessment of the wastewater, we have to do three because we have three separate curbed outfalls to the Fort Hills River. We have a south lagoon, we have an east lagoon, we have a north lagoon, the barrier. You know, we're doing this really three separate systems on the wastewater. There's also some areas in there where they ask for drinking water optimization, that should indicate protection for where your water loss issues, things like that. And then we have risk and residency. And a lot of these questions are, you know, how many miles of line do you have? How many of these, these lines fall within this age category? And then they, at the end, they score them and everything that is over a certain trigger and showing a threat. So they'll take the scorecard, have you had any compliance issues? And they are expecting, and I've been told by T-Ded, they are expecting you to dress really aging in, infrastructure with these funds, which is designed to do.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jim. This grant might be the first for someone new here in this room to hear about it. As far as county, this has been, it's coming to the county. And in my opinion, whether you're in the city or in the county, getting a utility provider from a, a utility provider that's out of our county, this could, is a good thing if they can pay the utility. I have talked with the city of Adamsville and the city of Selmer. They are interested in helping in upgrading some of the lines in our county. The day that we had a meeting, they also had this meeting for the same reason in McNairy County. But they expressed to me that they was interested in upgrading some of the lines, the Adamsville down in the Invo area and all, upgrading them to a four inch line where there is a tubing. And in the city of, uh, uh, Selmer that supplies water up to the west end of the county and the south end and figure up forty-five, they're also interested in upgrading some of their lines and possibly trying to get somebody to clarify the water, I guess is the best way to put it. But they are interested too, and they said they would try to make our next meeting. I want to reiterate what Commissioner Terry Bell said. The city is also part of the county. And anything we can help the city residents, just like the county residents that's getting the utility done, we need to be able to allow these utility companies part of this one. Whatever they can do to help their grounds to keep the city's costs down also. We'll be having more meetings and probably talk about it a little later. Just thank y'all for y'all's presentation. Next on the agenda, we have other business. I have two things I'd like to mention on the other business for, for. I'd like to ask for approval for taking bids to get the water painting. And I'd like to have income out of the local direct appropriations grant for the counties that comes from the state. This would be, I will write up the spec sheet and we would like to offer it out to bid for a couple of weeks and then get the purchasing committee and accept and we're bids. Would anyone like to make a motion for us to take off?
We could, we could do that.
I would like to ask that we could get bids to have the courthouse painted. And I wanted to possibly come out of the local direct appropriations grant for the counties. Some people call that the governor's grant. I would like to get the courthouse repainted.
The interior, exterior? Interior, exterior?
Exterior. And even the veil tie. And to take bids. Anyone like to make a motion that I could offer it out for bid?
What other question?
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner, Senator Collins, and a second by Commissioner. Kevin Paul. Is any more discussion or questions about this? This funds will come again from the local direct appropriations grant for the counties. Some call it the governor's grant. We have a motion and a second, any other questions? We're right up the stacks, I'm getting a contractor prep on the stacks and we'll put it advertising in the paper. Is there more discussing? You need a real talk? Pro talk?
Johnny Gardner?
Yes.
Terry Lovell?
Yes.
David Colton?
Yes.
Tom McKinnon?
Here.
Andrea Holland?
Yes.
Jackie Butler?
Yes.
Anne Moore?
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins?
Yes.
Rob Slick?
Yes.
Terry Emerson?
Yeah.
Sandra Hyer?
Yes.
Joseph Malero?
Yes.
Barry Smith?
Yes.
Tim Crow?
Yes.
Diana Jordan?
Yes.
Mike Alexander?
Yes.
Terry Bell?
Yes.
Todd Lewis?
Yes.
Eighteen four.
Thank you. Also here, I know we went over the ARCA funds, the grants. Also, UT extension, Cherokee County office is seeking funding to build an agriculture and educational center in Cherokee County. The site of the proposed center will be built on the existing county owned property on Fourth Street, usually referred to as the Fairgrounds Project. The agriculture and educational center will consist of large meeting space with a teaching and prep kitchen, indoor bathrooms, storage facility, and a detached covered arena. The main uses of this educational, the agricultural and educational center would be for the extension, extension programming, including agricultural classes, family and consumer science programs, and four age meetings and events. The kitchen will serve as prep space for these meetings and events as well as on hands, hands-on community health and nutrition workshops. The arena would also be used for four age and FFA events such as a livestock showing, judging team events, and livestock sales. The facility would also be available for community events and other civic organizations used at the county's discretion. The Tennessee Department of Agriculture is consulting on this project and is likely to donate funds to contribute. I talked with Commissioner Andy Holt and he said possibly up to a hundred and fifty thousand could be applied to this. The UT extension office is also exploring other funding opportunities, but the county would own the facility. And also one thing I'd like to mention is we appreciate the community of Invo. They received a community block grant of five hundred and twenty-five thousand from the Tennessee Department of Agriculture and Community Development for housing rehabilitation improvements. And that will greatly help the Invo area. Next on the agenda, we have notice.
I got a couple of things I want to add.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
All right. Just for nothing, the house back here behind the building, we bought that house back when Mayor seeked the mayor and we used it for rental property for several years. We've been working on that for a couple of years, what's the status on that?
Right now, we have to have the wheelchair round finished. We have the wheelchair round and binding of the, where we enclose the garage for storage area. The rest is finished inside and we hope to have them in there June of soon.
That's going to be for June?
Yes.
The rate I was getting at, is that something that we can continue to fund or is it something we need to put some of this old money and complete?
No, I think we're, we're good at that.
And one other thing is on the ARCA funds. The government's number one function, everybody wants money. And we want to try to help everybody as much as we can. But the government's number one function, whether it be federal, state, municipal or local, is public safety. We can use this ARCA funds to offset expenses in the general fund. We can't put it in rainy day fund, but we can use it to cap the expenses. We can use it for reoccurring, but we can use it for capital. I'm pretty confident Sheriff Weaver, remember, he puts in budget for, he's going to probably put forward the Chief David Griffin for civilians. They need him. We committed two years ago to try to help the fire department update some firefighters with. Commissioner McKinnon can attest to that. We replaced a truck that had been in service that was in nineteen forty-seven. We, we evolved him to trucks. I think we bought that in the government's grant, one of them evolved out. We have yet to have any blessing meetings. County usually starts, there's a little layer of important with the senators office and giving up the tax rate is what the appropriations and appropriations are. Before we give out all this money, we need to look at that and see if we can offset some general fund expenditure. Because I would hate for us to spend this money. This money is a blessing and a curse, let me tell you. But I would hate for us to allocate all this money and then we don't know where our general fund budget is. And maybe we could have used it to offset some of it. So I'm just asking these committees to keep that in mind, that when every budget committee starts meeting and his elected officials come to us or these capital purchases, we might ask to use some of that money to make the purchases. I'm telling you, my number one property, my number one, and maybe it's because of my lifestyle, my number one objective is public safety. Mayor, did you find out how much it is going to cost to remodel the old thing?
I checked multiple times on that. I contacted contractors and they asked me when did we project that we would do the job. I said that was unknown. And neither one of the contractors I thought wanted to give a price. Because they said if they didn't know the date, the materials, just like the city knows, fluctuate so much that if you didn't give them the exact time and the exact thing that you was wanting for, they don't want to give you no price. So I did check them and I was sorry, I did not get no price. Next on the agenda, we have a notice.
Yes, sir, we have eleven. Ms. Catherine Best, Sylvia Flowers, Tabitha Warne, Sherri Newman, Larry Roberts, Leanne Sims, Kim Layton, Deanna Morrison, Noel Quarles, Suzanne Scott, Jessica Campbell.
Move with approval, Richard.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner John.
Thank you.
Second by Commissioner Jack Butler. Any discussion back with the captain? Did not on the way to say hi. Any opinions?
Move with turn.
We have motion to adjourn.
Say hi to the judge.